Going to call this March 20th, 2023, meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors to order. Let's see, we have Pastor Bob Pett here with us this morning. We can start with invocation and then join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Fight team and combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to put their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on a shared mission. In Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A 3, 4, and 7. Looking for a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on April 3rd, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A 3, 4, and 7 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So move second.
For that motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it so ordered? Official business to come before the board. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation, claims, and demands. Excuse me, Attorney Estlin.
Thank you. Nothing to report to the board.
Thank you. Committee and/or legislative reports. Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spent the last two weeks traveling, what I think was a well-deserved vacation. I did come back east on I-40 and brought spring to you, so today is the first day of spring. Happy to report that. When I returned to the office, I was honored to receive this little lapel pin from the governor and the Arizona Commerce Authority for my service to them. And a nice plaque from HR for my 15-plus years of service, which actually was a lot more than that, but there was a break in service. So came back to all kinds of plaques and gifts, and I'm happy to be back to work for the residents of Mojave County, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. Yes, I attended the County Supervised Association Board of Directors meeting, and I can only report that there's lots of bills, there's lots of fighting, lots of party line votes, and lots of vetoes. So I'm sure that my report will be the same next week, so thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing today, Mr. Chair.
Right. We're going to go to, I actually have nothing above and beyond from number three, which is what we're moving to now, lobbyist report from High Ground Incorporated. I think we have Nick Ponder on the line.
Can you see me? Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Ponder. Go ahead with your update.
Mr. Chair, Supervisors, thank you for the time. We continue to pursue active legislation here at the state Capitol as it relates to groundwater. First, I'd like to give you an update on some legislation that we discussed the last time that I was there in person, as well as what Chair Lingefelter discussed two weeks ago. Let you know the status of those bills. And then we'll go through what we are continuing to be working on, then answer any questions if you have any. House Bill 2026, which relates to on-farm efficiency funds, $30 million allocation fund utilized and distributed by the University of Arizona to address and identify beneficial uses or reductions in use of groundwater surface and Colorado River water. That bill passed out of the Senate Natural Resources Committee on a 6 to 1 vote, and it was held for discussion only in Senate appropriations. There are some bills going through Senate appropriations that they're just holding for discussion only, and then they will put it in what they call "the box" as it relates to budget conversations for a later date. So they may not have an actual vote as a result of that. That is what, so, I'm sorry. House Bill 2374, the State Lake Improvement Fund bill that we had talked about last time, is up for Senate appropriations tomorrow. It was held off of Senate appropriations last Tuesday, but it's scheduled to be heard tomorrow in the Appropriations Committee, and we don't expect any challenges with that. Interestingly, the Appropriations Committee tomorrow is planned for votes and not just discussion only. So we'll keep an eye on that and see the status of that as it goes through. House Bill 2442, we discussed again last time. It's called Temporary Nonexpansion Areas. The analysis on this bill is that we believe that this theoretical tool to address groundwater challenges will never actually be implemented because of the rigid, rigorous requirements in order to have one implemented, which is that you need 50% of irrigators to agree that they need to be regulated and sign a petition. Then you need 10% of the voters, and then the county has to fund an election to then determine whether or not this temporary non-expansion area needs to be created. And then it's only created for a five-year period of time. That will be up in the Senate Natural Resources Committee this Thursday morning at 9:30. This is a bill that we had opposed previously for multiple reasons, but to what I mentioned before, but also on top of that, that it could detract from real groundwater legislation that we believe we've been pursuing for several years and that we believe will be beneficial not only to Mojave County but to the rest of the state. So we will anticipate signing in in opposition on that bill. The next one, House Bill 2763, has to do with the Mojave Wash Recharge Basin. I connected with Representative John Gillette as recently as this morning on this particular item, and he indicated it has not been scheduled for an Appropriations Committee hearing yet, and it's not on the agenda for tomorrow. So I talked to Mr. Gillette, and he indicated that he has been in communication with the chairperson. I have been in communication with the chairperson as well, and Senator Borelli is also working on that. We don't foresee any challenges with a committee hearing, just that Appropriations has a lot of items on the agenda and that it would either be the last or second-to-last week for appropriations bills to be heard where that one would get its hearing and that we would register in support on that. And then lastly, on the bills that are moving, Senate Bill 1390, which is the WIFA bill with amendments. It passed through the House Natural Resources Committee on a 7 to 3 vote and will be moving to the full floor for a vote thereafter. I'm happy to answer any questions on those before I move forward into strategies and tactics as we look to continue to pursue our groundwater legislation.
Any questions from the Supervisors on pending bills?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. I have a question. The one piece of legislation you were talking about that goes to the vote of the public, why are we against the public having the right to vote?
Yeah, good question, Mr. Chair, Mr. Johnson. I don't think that we're inherently against the public having the right to vote. However, I think the challenge that we find with that is that in those scenarios, we're not following the underlying aquifer data, the health of the aquifer, and we're allowing influence, whether it be in the irrigators who may not want to be regulated or others who may be, have a vested interest in future withdrawals from the aquifer in influencing the outcome of the election. And rather than having it being influenced by those measures, it should be, in our view, historically, our view has been it should be influenced by the data. But again, it's more so not that it goes to a public vote. It is that, again, we don't believe that five years is a long enough timeframe for a non-expansion area to be engaged. As you know, it takes a long time for water to matriculate down to the aquifer. And so the fear is that over that five-year period of time, the data may not measure a registered significant increase in water in the aquifer. And the folks being regulated might not be interested in continuing it because they haven't seen that yet, even though the water continues to matriculate. But also that we believe it will detract from legitimate groundwater legislation that needs to be pursued, not only in Mojave County but statewide, as a tool different from the active management areas and irrigation, non-expansion areas, that's locally driven and locally established and then supported by the Director of Water Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ponder, go ahead and continue.
So yeah, if I may, to continue talking about our proposed legislation, it was again House Bill 2731 and Senate Bill 1306. This is local groundwater stewardship areas. In consultation with Mr. Lingefelter, as well as Manager Elters and members of our coalition from several rural counties and other stakeholders, we have continued to have meetings with legislators and stakeholders and offer potential clarifying amendments or modifications to the legislation to make it more functional. After the last meeting that I was able to attend, we had a meeting in the, I was able to meet with the governor, the director of the Department of Water Resources, the governor's staff, and the governor's, what they're calling, resiliency director. And in that meeting, which we believe was very positive, in that meeting, the Director Vashatsky said that our legislation was good legislation and a tool that he would like to have to protect groundwater across the state. And so we felt galvanized in that, in our efforts in that. However, as you know by now, Ms. Griffin and Ms. Kerr, the chairs of the Natural Resources Committee, have been unwilling to hear the bills in their committee. So we are attempting to utilize alternative strategies with Representative Biassucci, Majority Leader Biassucci, as well as Majority Leader Borelli in attempting to navigate the legislature with varying options from striker legislation to late introduction of bills to other options that we will seek with the executive. And I'm happy to answer any questions on our groundwater stewardship legislation if you have any.
Any questions from the board? Harry Nine, go ahead and continue, Mr. Ponder.
Yeah, and then we just continue to educate folks about our challenges on the Colorado River and at all levels of state government with our challenges on the Colorado River and what we are challenged with as compared to what communities in central Arizona, for example. They have multiple sources of water, groundwater. The current Colorado River allocations that they get, they might have Salt River Project water from, so other surface water access. And then they would be the largest recipients of any augmented water that would eventually come to Arizona because they are the communities that could most afford it. Whereas our river communities, Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, et cetera, their waters, their access to water is only limited to Colorado River water. And so we continue to leverage those arguments. As I indicated the last time, unfortunately, legislation, going the legislative track will be most challenged because the Senate President hails from Queen Creek, and it would be challenging to get legislation certainly through with that in mind. But again, we continue to educate people on the matter and find potential opportunities to protect that water, to protect that river water for our river communities. That's, Mr. Chair, that's all I have unless there are additional questions for me.
No, and I would say on the river water issues, an additional source that the central Arizona communities would have, last December, the Colorado River Indian Tribes secured a federal settlement, which I believe will allow them to lease or sell up to 150,000 acre feet of their allocation to central Arizona communities. So just another option. Many of our Colorado River communities do not have other options like that. The Colorado River is their forever water, and as a consequence of that, they try to be good stewards of that, they try to be good water managers. And it's unfair for our Colorado River communities to be penalized for trying to be good stewards of the water that they have. So we'll see what happens as the lawsuit that we have continues. And also, we'll see what happens with the Bureau of Reclamation as they come out with their recommendations. Any other questions for Mr. Ponder or High Ground? Thank you, Mr. Ponder.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Great. Move to the County Managers' Report. County Manager Elters.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members. Yes, I have one item related to the two derailments that occurred last week. Just an update on the status as of this morning. First derailment, which as you know, occurred just six miles inside the Arizona state line from California. The derailment involved four to five cars that were near the front of the train. The reports from the field indicate that there were no hazardous materials carried or released from those cars. Once the scene was no longer considered an emergency or a threat, the scene was turned over to BNSF as of this morning. We do not know yet the cause of the derailment. However, we continue to reach out to BNSF for information and to coordinate related to that derailment. The other occurred the following morning in the early morning hours in the area of the Kingman Industrial Park and was not on the main rail. Based on the, based on information from responding agencies, the derailment involved non-load-carrying rail cars and occurred on a spur adjacent to the main rails. All cars remained upright, and there were 10 of them. Once again, we continue to reach out and to BNSF to coordinate with them, and we are awaiting further updates to arrive. That's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Elters. I believe we have a presentation this morning. Is that correct?
Yes.
With Arizona Game and Fish and Sheriff Schuster presenting to Deputy Charles Trescher with the 2023 Arizona Boating Officer of the Year Award. Sheriff Schuster, would you like to come up?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, County Manager, County Attorney, and our lovely Clerk of the Board. This is a great morning for me as we get to take an opportunity to recognize one of our own for exceptional achievement in law enforcement. I do have with me, and I'm honored to present to you, Major Danny Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, our Major Rodriguez is the State Voting Law Administrator, works for Arizona Game and Fish. This is a competitive award that is given each year. And what I'd like to do is have Major Rodriguez explain the award. I'll add a few comments at the end. We'll do a quick presentation, and then I'll ask the officer if he wants to make any statements or not. He may, who knows. Major.
Good morning, and thank you. Sheriff Schuster stole my thunder with my introduction, but my name is Major Danny Rodriguez. I am the Voting Law Administrator for the state of Arizona. I've been with the department for 16 years or so, and I started my career as a field game warden, jumped in this position, and hit the ground running and never turned back. I've had a great experience working with the Mojave County Sheriff's Office. I work with all these folks back here from the Lake Patrol Division, and I'm very excited to be here today. So this award is based off a couple components, the main one being law enforcement. So that would include O E Y citations, recreational boating citations such as No Egg Zone, life jackets, stuff like that. It also, the other part component includes community engagement, so education outreach. He does a great job with that whenever they bring out that little, that boat we have that has like the light, the wear it boat as they call it. They'll hand out different things like life jackets. The last component is the search and rescue, so he's very involved with that as well. And I just wanted to read a couple examples from the write-up that was provided to me. Deputy Trescher is the patrol boat operator, rescue diver, and dive team leader, and has many other certifications as well. Deputy Trescher comes as a wealth of knowledge, and the other deputies within the division look to him for guidance and advise on a regular basis. Deputy Trescher takes it upon himself to step up and lead whenever he is presented with the need or opportunity to do so. Deputy Trescher is a doer and is always looking for a solution, not problems. Deputy Trescher constantly steps up in any way possible to find a solution to any problem. Deputy Trescher especially excels in keeping our aging patrol watercraft fleet up to par. He has taken on the task of fixing many items on the patrol boats, all to save money. Deputy Trescher has attended numerous community events. During these events, he strives to preach boating and water safety to anyone who will listen. He makes it a point during his daily patrol to communicate to the boating public in a positive manner. So not only that, he's a very exceptional person. I've had the pleasure of working with him for the last couple of years and all the staff behind me. And all I have to say is, not to be great things for the Mojave County Sheriff's Office, you guys have one of the busiest waterways in the state of Arizona, as you probably know. And that just speaks volume because of their involvement with the community engagement, with the number of boating incidents they have to respond to, all the search and rescues, everything. And their expertise in the diving realm is just second to none. So they receive calls across the state whenever they get these fatal incidents that result in drownings. They always call these guys because they're very good at what they do. Let's see, just going through my notes here. So something else I want to point out is that this award will also help push forward for the Western States Boating Administrators Award. So that has to be submitted by a voting law administrator, which is myself. So I'm going to be pushing this for that nomination, as well as the national award through the National Association of State Voting Law Administrators, NASBLA. So I'm very excited to, for Deputy Trescher to represent Arizona for these nominations.
Thank you, Major. I'll share a quick story with you. I don't know if you remember my history. I started in 1989 with the Sheriff's Office, spent a great deal of time in the boating realm. I was a boating deputy and a boating sergeant, and I was twice named for this very award. And the reason I tell you that is because the first time I received it, I got a call from my nephew, who was eight at the time, in North Dakota. And he said, "Congratulations, you're the Boating Deputy of the Year in the desert." Okay, and I got to thinking about it, and from an outsider perspective, it makes sense through a child's eyes, so to speak. Do we have lakes in the desert? Well, yes, we do. And Lake Havasu and the Colorado River surrounding is, as the major mentioned, one of the busiest lakes, not only in the state but in the nation. It's a tremendous task to enforce and patrol, and we've done an exceptional job for many, many years. I'm very proud of, of course, Deputy Treshire for this award. Tresher, Treshire, Tresher. I'm going to call him Chuck. I've known Chuck for many years. Chuck came to us from the Lake Havasu City Police Department about four years ago, and we're very happy to have his experience and his knowledge. I would recognize that he brought his gaggle of beautiful family members today. All the young ladies sitting in the front row are here to support Chuck in this wonderful award. The nice thing about Lake Havasu and the Colorado River, it's very important to the lifeblood of our economy here in the county. It's important to the river cities, it's important to the county, it's important to the state. The reason people continue to come to these areas is because they feel safe. They feel safe because of the actions of men like Chuck and our boating division and our boating volunteers. And I'd also like to mention, we partner very well with all the agencies in this state. So it really is a team effort. Major Rodriguez has been fantastic. He has assisted us in so many ways. He's a good funding source. He's helped us get parts and whatnot for our boats that are most needed. And so we thank him for that, so treat him nicely because I'm going to be needing more stuff in the future. But we want to, again, stress how proud we are of Deputy Tresher. It's well deserved, Chuck. You've earned it. Congratulations. What we'll do is I'm going to read out the award. I'm going to present it along with the major, and then we'll ask you if you want to say some words. It says, "Arizona Boating Officer of the Year presented to Deputy Charles Tresher, Mojave County Sheriff's Office for your dedication and commitment to keeping Arizona waterways safe for the boating public, dated 2022. Congratulations, Chuck." Don't suck it in so long. Let's do this. And I love to put my officers on the spot, so Chuck, do you have anything you'd like to add?
First of all, thank you for having us here today. Second of all, I get all the credit for this. I have trouble accepting that because it's a team. And so each one of those guys up there, sitting there, are my partners, and none of this would have been possible without any of them, as well as Danny Rodriguez here and the best sheriff we could ever ask for, Sheriff Schuster. So I appreciate this opportunity, and this is, this means a whole bunch to me. So thank you. Thank all of you.
Deputy Tresher, congratulations. Thank you for all that you do and your team does for Mojave County and our waterways. Thank you also to your family for coming up. I mean, you represent very well, and it's well deserved. Thank you. Anything else from the board members? Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll move to a call to the public. Mr. Scotty McClure. Brenda Stockbridge, you're on deck.
Scotty from Bullhead, can you poll number 17, please? Before I forget, I was over at the fairgrounds again on one of the auctions, and they have ADA'd one of the bathrooms over there. And I want to compliment them on fixing new sinks. The ramp is ADA'd. They painted the place, they put new tile in. Your workers over there did that. You didn't have to sub it out. They did a very, very good job. It looks different. Then, the bad news. In the female bathroom, the next day, somebody went, or that day, somebody In the female bathroom, the next day, somebody went, or that day, somebody went in and put a cigarette out on the wall. That's your public that's probably bitching in the newspaper. Put a cigarette out on the wall, brand-new paint. What a bunch of lowlifes. Anyway, they did a good job. Why I'm mainly up here today for is these TV channels. I tried to get ahold of Webcom, and I didn't get an answer back from them, but why is Channel 10 now Channel 17.1, and 2, and 3, and 4? Why are they moving channels? NBCs and, they're all, Channel 7 is now Channel 27.1, and this and that, this new channel guide. They have moved all my channels, and I can't figure this out. PBS, they've moved some of them. What the hell is going on here? You have people older than me, and my remote, my 5, number 5 doesn't work, so I'm really screwed. I can't reprogram this thing. I have to go one at a time. By then, the movie's over. I want an answer on what's going on here in Phoenix. Who's telling us, what is Phonehauer doing about this? I got sent around to two or three different people, and they couldn't get, they're saying it's because of the emergency broadcast alert that you guys do? You bought the cheapest thing years ago. Now here we are. Is that the reason why? You're putting it on one channel at a time? Remember, I was here a couple weeks ago, or a month ago, bitching about this? And I figured that, somebody said they're going back to the original. But this is bull, especially for somebody that is bedridden. This is the only thing they've got, is these TV channels. Next thing is the morgue. Then we have this, what the heck did you do with this? Yeah, this, this, this needs to be something. Our great newspaper that had been bought out, remember I asked you guys that there should be an investigation that they bought out the whole, all the county newspapers, including Nevada and Arizona, too? There's something wrong with this. Did you see the Sunday papers? We're going to have ads up here now on all four pages. Daisy, you're really screwing this paper up. I didn't think it could do that anymore than Nick Boyd did.
Thank you for your time, sir. Brenda Stockbridge?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am Brenda Stockbridge. I'm a resident of Mojave County and Kingman. Our family has a ranch in Mojave County, and I'm here today to ask the public if they're aware of the plans the United States Department of the Interior has for expansive commercial solar farming in Mojave County. If not, I would like to bring these plans to your attention, as these are moving forward right now in the next few months. The website of the Bureau of Land Management shows a map of solar planning regions, and I have a little copy of them, but they are, they're very easy to find on the B L M website. For now, the Department of the Interior has prioritized a combined total of 870,000 acres for commercial solar development, mainly concentrated in the southwest United States. The map shows Mojave County below Grand Canyon will bear the brunt of these commercial solar farm developments in Arizona and the southwest. Only the Mojave County desert in southeast Arizona shows as much potential development as Mojave County. Commercial solar farming is planned mostly along Highway 93 north of Kingman and in the White Hills. And again, if you go to the map on the website, it's easy to find. I don't have much time, but I want to point out that commercial solar farming is not a benign enterprise, and the citizens of Mojave County deserve more than has been presented to us. A drive to Las Vegas and through the commercial solar farms near Boulder City can give us a glimpse of our future. The soil below each panel is scraped clean of all life and sterilized, and thousands upon thousands of acres of land is affected. I would also like to point out that there are multiple surfaces that have already been disturbed and could be a replacement for virgin soil. These include roofs and bridges, among other notable examples. I have worked closely with the B L M Regional Office, and I can genuinely say that they are gracious and helpful within the parameters of their official duties. Please go to them and ask to hear and be heard. I believe there is a comment section on their website, or you can call their offices. They have offices in Havasu and here in Kingman. So thank you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Chris Rodarte?
Good morning, Chris Rodarte, Mojave County taxpayer. In 1771, Samuel Adams poignantly penned, quote, "The liberties of our country, the freedom of our civil constitution are worth defending at all hazards, and it is our duty to defend them against all attacks. We have received them as a fair inheritance from our worthy ancestors. They purchased them for us with toil and danger and expense of treasure and blood, and transmitted them to us with care and diligence. It will bring an everlasting mark of infamy on the present generation, enlightened as it is, if we should suffer them to be wrested from us by violence without a struggle, or be cheated out of them by the artifices of false and designing men," unquote. We, the then-future generation in 1771, are far less enlightened, it seems. It would have served us well to take Adams' warning to heart, since over the past few years, we as a society have voluntarily offered up our liberty in exchange for safety and comfort, for which we are currently paying the price. Mojave County, Arizona, is not immune to any of this, and we must remain vigilant. In that regard, I urge each of you serving on this board, representatives of we, the people, to seriously and thoughtfully study each agenda item for its constitutional basis and legality before casting your votes. Do not place your perceived popularity amongst your loudest critics above your duty to uphold and defend the Constitution as your oath requires. Sometimes doing the right thing is unpopular and unappreciated. Do it anyway. Do not operate as false and designing men and women. Do not cheat us out of our God-given freedom and liberty, bought and paid for with the blood and treasure of our worthy ancestors. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thomas Bond?
Good morning, Chairman, and good morning to Jean Bishop and all of our wonderful supervisors. I single out Jean Bishop because I am here to talk about Golden Valley, and I am a company that's called Biograph Company LLC, and we are now officially establishing our company in Golden Valley as of next week. So that's very good. We're doing our LLC there. We may be even putting in a small studio there because we are an entertainment company. So we're very happy to be in Golden Valley. Reason I'm here is because we're going to be speaking with Robert Sebold with Arizona Commission in the state. We're going to be doing that this week on the future of Biograph in Golden Valley. And also, we're going to be speaking with him about bringing more economic development to the Golden Valley area, which we're very excited about. So that's, we wanted to give everyone an update and keep all of you on an update on what we're doing. And also, this is going to be some of our plans, our little ideas that we have for the area of Golden Valley, since we want to be critically involved deeply in our state of Arizona and, of course, Mojave County. And let's see. The next thing that I wanted to put up is one of our people with the Golden Valley Commission, our little thing that we have on Facebook, said that I need to come up here and address something that is local on Golden Valley besides just giving an update. So I'm going to go ahead and do that, and I say I have time for that. One of, actually several people emailed me on this, and it is putting cat's eyes, and cat's eyes is reflectors on the roads in Golden Valley that are paved or two-lane roads like, for instance, Colorado, maybe Highway 68, which does have a few on there, and also Aztec, because during these storms and all of the crazy weather that we're having, there has been quite a few stuck cars and accidents on the road. And instead of putting lights up to see if there's any funding, that they can put the little reflectors actually on the middle of the road so people can see better. And so that was our comment for Facebook. So I want to thank everybody again. We're very excited on what's happening in Golden Valley, and I'm really happy to live there and happy to have my company there. And I don't want to waste your time, and we will give you more updates on what's going on. Thank you, Jean, and thank you, everyone, and you have a wonderful afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Wayne Hollins?
I'm here to talk about water again. First of all, I took it upon myself to have some T-shirts made for rainwater harvester and a couple different ones there. This one, that water is life. Have you saved any recently? The other one is water, don't waste a drop. And then I have an observation, I guess it would be. You know, I've been talking about the Veterans Park down there and getting some water harvesting stuff done down there. We're paying someone to go out there and, and keep it bare, dry, hot, and dusty. Why don't we take that same money and pay them to make it wet, cool, and planted with a biodiversity of plants, and keep it where it's an inviting place for us to go and, and recreate? And then I want to get back to your Low Impact Development Guide for Flood Protection and Water Sustainability. Think that's what all we're supposed to be working on. Conventional drainage infrastructure typically focuses on flood mitigation alone by conveying away the maximum amount of water as quickly as possible. Multi-benefit decentralized drainage infrastructure is necessary to address community flooding, water supply, and quality of life improvements. Why is decentralized stormwater infrastructure important? It mitigates nuisance flooding, drainage issues associated with high-frequency storm events, and reduce overall stormwater runoff volumes. Provide stormwater management alternatives at a scale for residents to implement and construct with limited resources. Promote water conservation through groundwater recharge, improve stormwater quality, reduce erosion and sedimentation, and improve soil health and soil moisture. That's decentralized is meaning at residents' house, businesses, and what have you, not coming down and washing our $22 million we're waiting on to do our detention ponds and what have you. Those are centralized. We all can contribute to the problem, reduce the runoff, reduce the cost of going and recovering the dirt out of the roads and the washes and moving it every time it rains. We just got to do something and do it right. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. Douglas Seeker?
My name is Douglas Seeker. I just first want to say thank you for what you did for Ken and Lana and Valery last year by approving the internships for people with disabilities and adults. Just to give you a review, over a year and a half ago, we had a young lady who was sheltered inside of her home that was put on a work program of 120 hours on-paid position that worked with the county dog pound, who worked with Nicole, who thought it'd be a great idea to take the program to Ken Cunningham, to take it to the directors, who are very excited, which Phil from IT, Bruce from janitorial, and from your automotive division, took some clients on, on a 20, 20-week, four-hour-a-day program. Seven out of the nine that went through the program are now not standing at their mailboxes waiting for a check to show up. These programs have been very successful. We have tried reaching out to the city to have the same response, but we have not even received an email. I want to thank you for these clients that are now, two of them are working full-time in your county offices. One young lady was told that she wouldn't be smart enough to have a job, now has a full-time job in apartment and riding the bus back and forth to work. Ken said to his directors, it's not what they can do, it's what we can teach them to do. When Ken called me to the office with your approval of these, with these internships, have again changed the lives of these seven people, and the elderly as well. Again, I'm hoping that you will maybe increase them so that we can get more. The Mojave, the young lady that, over at Brittany, her name's Brittany, at Best Western, took on the program and doing the work adjustment program, which is 120 hours of on-paid hours, which, of course, was, Ken thought it was unfair, which brought the, where you guys came in and did the 20 hours of, 20 weeks of paid at four hours, which he thought was a better idea. Anyways, the work adjustment program is 120 hours of on-paid, and then you have the program, which is over at Best Western, where the state pays half and they pay half, and that's teaching hospitality. So those group of kids, even though they will not get hired there, possibility they could, she hopes to keep all of them, are now trained, so when they go to these other hotels, they're saying, nah, I do have experience in hospitality, and they could be hired with sort of a certificate, saying, yes, we have made a difference. Instead of them saying, well, you have no experience, we don't want to talk to you. Again, I want to say thank you, Supervisors, for, for doing this for these people with disabilities, and hopefully it will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move to the consent agenda. Supervisor Bishop, would you like to poll any items? Supervisor Angus?
No, thank you.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, number 17 and number 26.
And Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
We've also had a request to poll item 8, so I'm going to poll item 8. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 8, 17, and 26.
So move.
I have a second.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it so ordered? Move to item number 8. I polled that. Mr. Rodarte, do you want to come up and provide public comment?
Chris Rodarte, Mojave County taxpayer. I'm opposed to item number 8, calling for approval of a $143,000 emergency management performance grant. Buried deep within the sub-recipient, and that's Mojave County is the sub-recipient, agreement, is the requirement to comply with an executive order from 1994, signed by Bill Clinton, calling for environmental justice. Following is a quote from the executive order number 12898. "To the greatest extent practical and permitted by law, each federal agency shall make achieving environmental justice part of its mission by identifying and addressing as appropriate disproportionately high and adverse human health or environmental effects of its programs, policies, and activities on minority populations and low-income populations in the United States," unquote. Peppered throughout are references to racial inequality and oppression. However, the order itself lacks a strict definition of exactly what environmental justice is or how to recognize it. definition of exactly what environmental justice is or how to recognize it. And when the feds at long last dispatch their clipboard-carrying brigade of auditors to Mojave County, we will of course be required to prove compliance with this vaguely worded document. Sadly, I expect my plea in opposition of item eight will go unheeded. All I ask is that you reconsider rubber stamping it and at the very least defer your decision. Please take the time for further study, listen to your conscience, and when it's time to vote, remember Thomas Jefferson's admonition: "Timid men prefer the calm of despotism to the boisterous sea of liberty." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Managerial elders or perhaps emergency management staff, this item in no way, is this a new grant? You want to come forward really quick? Two questions really, Mr. Dorner. Is this a new grant? And do you see this really tying us in any sort of actual way to what we need to do to any social justice campaign at this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it is not a new grant. It is something that's been going on. As was mentioned, the, this started twenty-five-plus years ago. And so you've seen this. And I don't think that you see that as we go through this, that there is anything that we're tying into that. If you've, if you did get a chance to review it, you know, there's, there's multiple things associated with the performance grant. And most of those are associated with what we do, the personnel responsibilities, and a lot of reporting that occurs with it. So without really specifics there, I don't, I don't have a whole lot more for you to add than it's a continuation of a, of a grant that's been before this board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dorner. Any other questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion? Heard that motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number seventeen, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a request from the public to remove this for discussion. If staff wants to explain what we're doing here.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Supervisor Gould, this was us once we took over the fairgrounds association, or the fairgrounds operation. They had an existing naming of the arena agreement, and we continued it for a short portion of time. And this was, the staff was asked to put out a request for proposals to see if anyone else would be interested in that naming rights. This is purely a revenue generating contrast, contract for naming rights for the fairgrounds rodeo arena. And that's what is before the board today. I can address any other questions or board, wow, Director Lutowski can speak to the board on the technicalities if necessary.
Oh, there it is outside booth. Okay, change.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gould.
Tara, what was the process for selecting the winner of the?
Sure. So we did a request for proposals process, which we've discussed this recently. The request for proposals process, we can score things other than just their offer for price. I will say that we received one response. We actually were not satisfied entirely with what they offered as far as what they were willing to pay us for the naming rights. And so we actually worked with them and we negotiated an increase in price. Sorry, I'm reviewing my backup. But I think overall, it's initially starting out at twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars per year for the naming rights, increasing twenty-five-hundred dollars each year thereafter. It's a total five-year term for the agreement. So after the five-year term, it'll actually be a total value of eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Through the negotiation process, we actually increased the revenue coming into the county by thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McClure, I think wanted to address-
Absolutely. Mr. McClure, you had filled out a request to speak for him if this item got polled. Do you want to come up?
Yeah, I've had a problem with Anderson Ford before here. But first of all, yeah, I wanted to know how we arrived at that figure. What was Swanee's paying? And who's going to pay to take their sign down and put theirs up? Is the county going to pay for this? The fairgrounds going to pay for this? Or is Anderson Ford going to pay for this? It's not easy to put one of those big things that you can see along the freeway, you know, the big bright lights. And is it going to flash? I hope not. Digital. I hope it's just their name up there. You can see it from the freeway. I don't know what those billboards go for that are along the freeway, the big ones. But this is a pretty good location for eighty-seven thousand dollars for five years. I'd like an answer how much a billboard costs, you know, those big ones that you see. Mainly, who's going to pay to put them up and down? Anderson Ford had a contest along with that rag we call the Mojave Daily News. Football contest. They'd have a weekly winner. Well, I won week three. I won a twenty-five-dollar Vito pizza card. Thirty dollars for a pizza there, but whatever. Good pizza. I'm not, yeah.
Sir, if I can just jump in- Make sure you keep your comments aligned to the-
I'm bitching about Anderson Ford and they're, you know, they didn't honor the deal. They quit the program.
That doesn't have anything to do with this item in particular, though.
Yeah, I suppose it doesn't. But they suck.
Thank you. Does staff want to provide any remarks?
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board. Mojave County Fairgrounds inherited what was a previous contract between Mojave County Fair Association and Martin Swanee. We brought this in front of the board and we-
You speak up a little bit.
Sorry. And opted to, with the board's approval, assume the sponsorship of Martin Swanee last year. That netted us about twenty-one thousand dollars. Martin Swanee opted not to renew their, their agreement with us. And as a result, as Tara pointed out, we did go for an RFP which resulted in the Anderson Ford selection. I do want to point out that Martin Swanee did take down at their own expense, their own sign. Anderson Ford will be erecting at their own expense, their own sign. It'll be, just be a solidly lit sign, much like we saw with the Martin Swanee sign. The reason why we arrived at the current twenty, twelve-thousand-five-hundred per year figure, which does have a twenty-five-hundred-dollar per year escalator, is there was negotiations back and forth on a sponsorship fee, and we settled on twelve-thousand-five-hundred, understanding from Anderson Ford that there was cost involved in actually having their own sign manufactured and erected. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them from the board.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions from the board members? Thank you. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item seventeen be adopted.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Move to item number twenty-six. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious what went wrong with our credit card program that we implemented a few years back in the Golden Valley Improvement District.
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, members of the board. Yes, a few years ago, we did install credit card terminals at all three of our Golden Valley Improvement District water system stand pipes. I do want to state right from the get-go that customers, whether they live inside the district or out, have the option to establish an account with Golden Valley Improvement District. They'll be provided a metered card and that any water, you know, taken from the stand pipes would then be charged their account and subsequently billed. So what happened with the credit card terminals is that we did experience intermittent downtime with the terminals. And then upon a further audit of the terminal's revenue receipt collection, we found discrepancies with collecting numerous fees as well as the sales tax. So we found that we were being charged eight dollars a month per terminal in fees that we weren't able to recollect from the customers. Also, there's a two-point-five percent transaction tax and a ten cent, they're not tax, it's a fee, but a ten cent fee on every transaction, which we did not able, we were not able to charge the customers nor have a mechanism to. And again, for whatever reason, the customers were, you know, it's adopted by the board, the rate is nine dollars and eighty-four cents, but yet the system can only enter into the nearest dime. So we were only charging nine dollars and eighty cents. So we lost, which is over the past year, about thirty-two-hundred dollars in lost revenues. So we, just because of the challenges in maintaining the system's uptime, we are just presenting this item for board concurrence to remove the credit card terminals. But I do want to emphasize that any customer inside or outside the district have the clear opportunity to obtain a standby card and they, they can just open up an account with the district.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Director Lutowski, will they be able to put cash in those vendors?
At this time, I, we used to have a quarter, you know, type machine, but I believe those are removed as well. So I don't believe that that would be an option.
So if somebody needs water over the weekend, what do they do if they can?
They would need to establish an account with the district beforehand. And they would always have a standing account with a water card that they could swipe at the terminals. And they would just be billed for whatever water they would.
So this is a prepaid account? Or they pay after the fact?
Not prepaid. It would be, it would be billed. Billed as used. So it could be a zero balance until such time as they, they needed.
So if they have a card, they're in good shape. But if they don't have a card on the weekend, they're out of luck?
Yes, if they didn't arrange for an account earlier with the district.
Thank you. Steve, as a part of this change, has it been advertised that, you know, this isn't going to be an option anymore? We, just to make sure that it's a seamless transition, you'd want to put anybody in a bad spot necessarily. And can they register for an account online?
Chairman Lingefelter, I don't believe account registration online is available, but we were just going to notice at all the stand pipes for about thirty days before taking them out. But I wanted to take this a step further and present this item to the board so that we have even more knowledge and understanding. But this will be properly noticed at the stand pipes.
How do customers or potential customers create an account?
Information is available at the stand pipe for contacting the district office. And it's just basically handled over the telephone, or they can come in person at the Public Works Office.
And right now, online registration isn't an option?
I don't believe so.
Do you think that that will be in the future?
We consider-
For convenience?
Absolutely.
I think that'd be a good-
Yeah. It's a smart move. Yes.
Any other questions? Supervisor Bishop?
No questions. Just a comment that the GVID customers usually have an account or a way of supplying water to their homes. It's not like they run out of water on the weekend and will run down and think, oh, I, I should have started an account. So, you know, with the notice being on the stand pipes for thirty days, everybody will cycle through and get water for their storage tanks. And emails will go out to the, to the customers. So I think losing money is, is probably not a good idea to continue it now that it's been identified. So I like the idea of being able to open an account online. And if, if that's possible, I'd like to see that be done in the future. And with that, I'll make a motion that we do approve.
Thank you. You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
You guys appear to have it? Do you have it? So ordered. We'll move to public hearings. Director Lutowski, item number thirty-six.
Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, staff presents, following a successful year operating the Mojave County Fairgrounds, and especially the Mojave County Fair, a revised fee structure for the 2023 calendar year. Most notably, we're doing this, with all due respect, for purposes of improving operations, namely at the parking entry. We did find during some peak inflows during the Mojave County Fair, particularly Friday nights, Saturday nights, that the arrival rate actually exceeded the service rate, as I call it, for collecting parking fees. We had a five-dollar parking fee in place. And that did cause some backups from time to time on the city street network, as well as some people that just resigned to parking on city streets. So we are configuring the rates such that it basically will not impact the family four. In fact, it's about a dollar less. We're proposing to charge adults two dollars more from ten to twelve dollars, but remove that five-dollar parking fee because we are confident that if we remove the service aspect of collecting parking fees at the entrance, that we can get more vehicles free-flowing into the lots and parked without a backup. So we are lowering just ever so nominally some of the vendor, vendor fees. We did find some feedback, especially from local craft vendors, that the fees may be a little too high. But we only lowered them nominally. So with that, it's fee schedule largely mirrors last year's fee schedule. And then one other caveat, on Sunday of the fair, we are proposing a five-dollar, a fixed five-dollar entry fee for everyone. It's typically a very low attendance day. So maybe trying to promote a little bit more, you know, a little bit more attendance on, on the Sunday of the fair, perhaps that might, you know, trigger a little bit more vendor sales and things like that.
Any questions?
Chairman-
Oh, Supervisor Angus, Supervisor Bishop.
Steve, I think whoever put this together did a fantastic job. I love the-
Excuse me. This is a public hearing. My bad. My bad.
You're right.
Does anyone wish to speak at the public, at the public hearing going once? Going twice? Anyone wish to speak? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Supervisor Bishop.
Okay. And just, just to repeat, I think whoever put this schedule together put a lot of thought and effort into it. I really like the fact that we have no fees for parking. I think the residents that live in that neighborhood will appreciate people not parking in their, in front of their homes and blocking their driveways. They'll be able to park in the designated parking areas. So the, the last day of the fair being so low, the people that can't afford to go during the regular days will have that opportunity to come in at the last day and enjoy all the amenities and what's offered for the Mojave County Fair. So kudos to, to you and your staff and everyone that helped put this together.
I've never been there, Parks Administrator.
What's the logo this year? The stakes are high. So, yeah. Good job. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, Supervisor Angus?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's great about the parking fees. My only concern is, you know, you're going to be saving time for people coming in parking. But now that it's kind of an odd number, you're going to have to have a lot of change. And that's gonna, it's gonna take a time to get through that line, too. So I just hope you're aware, maybe have more people, make sure you have a lot of change, a lot of dollar bills.
And Supervisor Angus, good point. We handle both cash and credit card, but we have adopted even last year, credit card terminals. These are little handheld laptop-type or, or pad-type of, iPad-type of devices that we can just do without the point and pay with the credit cards.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lutowski, I think the elimination of the parking fee is a good idea. I think it'll streamline people getting into the fair. They don't have to fish out their wallet, out of their back pocket, out of their pants where they're sitting in the driveway. I think that's a good idea. We'll have to make sure that we streamline the ticket booth also.
Yes.
Because it seems like we had a backup at the ticket booth anyway. And then if we're going to move people into the parking lot faster, we probably need to move them through that ticket counter and into the fair faster. We'll also have to track whether you have increased, more vendors at a lower vendor fee or not. Because people like to complain about prices, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the price is unfair.
Right.
So I'll have to, I'll have to track that. But-
We have last year's numbers and we'll compare it to this year's numbers.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Johnson, do you have any comments on the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
We can hear you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Going off of what Supervisor Gould said, I'm opposed to the lowering of the vendor fees. You look at, those are, those fees, why you might say, well, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars for an inside booth is a lot of money. But that's for four days. So when you divide it by four, it's not very much money. I think when you sell a product for less money, people don't think it's worth anything. So I'm opposed to the lowering of the fees on, on the vendor fees. I support the parking, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, Supervisor. Director Lotosky, perhaps you or Kristen could provide a little bit of background on how you arrived at the rates that you're proposing. The backup we have is two pages and there wasn't really any discussion on the basis of how those figures were derived at.
I think it would be best if I introduced Kristen Zimmerman, our Parks Administrator, to comment on it. I think she can elaborate a little bit more on the vendor demand that we had both inside and outside. Inside looked pretty good. Inside, we filled that exhibit hall pretty well, but I think outside, there was definitely room to be gained with some additional vendors.
Terrific. Good morning, Kristen.
Good morning, Chair. Sorry. The reason we established the fees for the vendors the way that we did is we looked at, we took a hard look and it's a community fair. So we want to encourage those local community vendors to come out as much as we can. There were some concerns about the pricing. We heard, I mean, everybody heard the comments. But we also, in the fee structure, part of what we're offering is for vendors to be listed as additionally insured. So there's that $100 fee. If they don't carry their own insurance, they can be listed under our supplemental insurance policy. So that's an extra, it's an extra fee. So it's going to work out in the wash, we think. But again, we can do that analysis after the fair of this year.
Great. The only other comment I would make, and it's a small change, and I'm not sure if my colleagues would support it or not, but I see that the veterans and first responders rate just went up by a dollar. I would request that that stay $5, just in respect for our veterans and our first responders. I just think it's the right thing to do. We have a lot of veterans in Mojave County, quite a lot, a large concentration. So it's not a big thing, but it's a thing. That's all I have. Any other questions? If not, I think Supervisor Bishop was about to make a motion.
I did make the motion.
Made a motion.
Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, would you want to change that to give the first responders to keep it at $5, like Chairman Lingefelter asked? Is that something you would consider doing in your motion? So you want to let first responders in for $5?
Instead of six.
Instead of six?
It looks like last year, we let in veterans and first responders for $5. It's proposed increases to $6 and I just suggested perhaps we leave that entry fee for veterans and first responders at $5.
I think five or six is really very inexpensive. I don't really see that $1 is going to make the difference. It might help with making changes all, but Kristen, what's your thought on that, please?
We just kept it at 50% off of the new rate. So the adults are at $12 a person. So we just kept the percentage the same, so at that 50%. Either way, we'll be fine.
I think it's still fair and shows our respect and appreciation for our first responders. So I think the theory of 50% off is justified. So I'll just leave my motion the way it is.
You've heard that motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
I appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Regular agenda, item number 37, Director Morian.
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter, board members. This item was continued at the last meeting after some discussion about whether, whether or not to accept Finance's recommendation to use a multi-year approach where we spread the increase in the jail per diem and booking fees out over more than one year. So I'm back before you. I do have additional information, if you would like it, for, basically if you use the full rate, make the entire increase for fiscal '24, it'll generate about $140,000 additional revenue, based on our revenue projections. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from board members. Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. You know, I spoke to the cities and, you know, looked at our histories and, you know, with COVID, some of the numbers are a little skewed, right? Because it's based on numbers and we didn't have all the people at the jail during COVID. So there is a possibility that the cities will actually be paying more. So my point is, I'm fine with what was put in front of us last meeting and I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop.
So I did receive a phone call from the mayor, who's very much opposed to this. And also, I got an email from Toby Cotter. We probably all received the same email. But, you know, the price of doing businesses is going up and we have to be able to meet our expenses. So I agree with Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. or Director Morian. Do we know what the booking level was pre-COVID? Might be a sheriff question, I don't know.
Yeah, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, I don't have the, I don't believe I have those numbers with me. We did see a pretty significant decrease during COVID when the restrictions were in place. And just some background on the analysis and how these fees are calculated, a large part of it is based on the average inmate population on any given day during the year. And so if you have a lower population, it's going to drive the rate upward. And so we did alter the calculation a little bit this year, whereas because the restrictions were recently lifted, we wanted to use the most recent data that we have. And so we took the first six months of the current fiscal year, extrapolated that out over the remainder of this fiscal year to come up with the average inmate count for the rates for FY '24. Whereas in previous years, we would have been looking at the 12 months for fiscal '22 being the last fiscal period, absent any analysis on the current year-to-date. So there is a possibility that if we continue to see an upward trend in those average inmate population, that these rates, 100% of the rates as calculated could be a little bit too high.
So currently, in your current calculation, you took half of a normal year and half of a COVID year, more or less?
We took July through December of the current fiscal year, got a monthly average for that, multiplied it by 12.
Okay, so it's a little more updated.
Correct.
Number, okay. Which begs the question, do we still, you want to ease into the rate increase or do we want to go ahead and increase the rate for our cost? Because we're the ones that are absorbing that cost if we don't go, if we don't go ahead and charge the cities for their inmates. And bear in mind, it's only, it's their inmates that they charge in their courts. It's not just a criminal that comes from a city.
Supervisor Johnson, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Supervisor Gould that we need to recoup our costs. Now, I don't know if it's possible, but the county could look at end of the year saying, well, we exceeded our costs by $5,000 and we'll reimburse the cities. But for us to pick up the costs for the city's prisoners is not very good financial planning on our part. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Bishop.
I think, I think what's been discussed here is that we recoup our costs. But I would not be opposed to revisiting this in six months or a year and take another look at it. Plus, when we get the reach-out program established and working, then I think we need to take a look at those fees again because I think that's going to be a big factor in the costs of housing inmates.
Manager Elters, would you like to contribute?
Mr. Chairman, board members, we have historically analyzed and reviewed and reported to the board annually these costs related to both the booking and the per diem. The period during the pandemic was obviously an outlier simply because of the restrictions that were placed. We can go in either of those directions that you're contemplating. Keep in mind though, as you heard from Supervisor Gould, that we are, and Director Morian, we are working with estimates and the estimates in a period where the restrictions have been lifted and there's gradual change, things are normalizing as far as the arrests and booking and the per diem. So we, because of that uncertainty, we presented you with the original option, which was to recapture a portion, allow a full year to be recorded and then capture that next year, but which would eliminate the need to reissue funds to the cities in the case of overpayment. But we will work with the direction that the, and the decision the board works with.
Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. So this original one, which is the booking fee 77 and the per diem 92, which is an increase of 10% and 25%, the cities were okay with that, which is pretty much the first time since I've been sitting here that the cities did not balk at something. So we negotiated in good faith with that and I think that's where they, it should stand. Because if I get this correctly, Supervisor Johnson wanted to go to the full recap, 100%, right? So Supervisor Gould is saying that with this increase, maybe slide into it, but I didn't, I didn't see that as being, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, that was, I said that was the question, is whether we ease into it, which was the, what staff's recommendation was, or what it sounds like myself and Supervisor Johnson would like to do is go ahead and charge enough to recover our costs so that we aren't subsidizing the prisoners for the cities. They have a sales tax, we do not. I know that's my fault, but that's just how it is. Thank you.
Chairman Lingefelter?
Director Morian?
If I might give some additional comments. So the rates that we proposed last time, Supervisor Angus pointed out, was $77 for the booking fee, where the analysis showed the need for an $81.98 booking fee and $92 for the daily per diem, where the analysis showed 107.74. We base that, as County Manager Elters said last time, that was approximately 50% of the increase that the analysis showed the need for. I did go ahead and just do some calculations to, instead of doing 50% of the increase, what 75% of the increase showed by the analysis would be. And that would, that would be a rate of $99.20 for the per diem and 78.99 for the booking fee, if the board wanted to kind of find a happy medium, just to offer that as an additional option.
Director Morian, I've got a question. I'll try to phrase it right. Should the county adopt 100% of our costs in one year? And should one of the cities that are participating now opt to go a different, a different route and maybe book prisoners into another facility somewhere in La Paz or something? Would that have a financial impact on the remaining participating cities? Does that make sense?
I didn't hear the last part.
Would that have an impact on the remaining participating cities? If one of the cities that are booking into our jail were to book their prisoners into a different facility, would that action have a financial consequence for the others and for the county?
It would have a financial impact on the daily inmate population, which is what these fees are based on. But these fees are adopted for an entire fiscal year. So absent, you know, and the city's budget based on that. So unless we were to come back and adjust the rates mid-year, which I think would not be entirely fair to the cities, as you know, all the government and his budget for the entire fiscal year. So that would be my main concern with that.
Thank you.
To that point.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that our jail is currently shorthanded. And if we did increase the rates and if that did have a city then decide to put their prisoners in, say, another county's jail or a tribal facility, I believe that would be beneficial to our county jail. I believe we're only at 45% staffing. So I don't see the danger personally.
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, the other factor to consider is if we adopt the 100% rates and it drives the inmate population down significantly, then we, as I stated, that average population is what drives the rates up or down. The lower that population, the higher the rates would need to be. So we would find ourselves in a situation where we're then undercharging.
But since this is a dynamic pricing model, we're paying overtime right now for officers. We're bringing in sheriff's deputies into the jail and paying them overtime.
That is correct.
So there might be some savings on that also.
There might be some savings. I don't have the numbers and we haven't performed an analysis to see.
And it's a dynamic model, so it's a what-if. Thank you.
Thank you. Good dialogue. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had this discussion years ago when the cities had a problem with our fees and they started booking in other locations and they all came back to Mojave County. You still have to, if you're looking at La Paz, you still have the transportation costs. Some jails might not be as secure, might not have the health benefits that our jail offers. So I think the possible threat of them moving out is really moot. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. You need any comments or I would entertain a motion? Supervisor Angus?
I make a motion that we adopt the FY '23, '24 jail booking and housing rates as prepared and presented with the new fees taking effect July 1, 2023.
You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Aye.
You guys appear to have it? Do you have it? So ordered.
Chairman, just for clarification, as prepared and presented was the $77 and the $92, that's what we're going with?
Yes.
I believe that's correct.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Item number 38, we did that in executive session. We're going to move to item number 39, discussion and possible action. Approve the appointment of a person to fill the Bullhead City Constable position effective April 5, 2023. I have a motion. Supervisor Bishop?
Since I am the former constable, I am proud to make the motion that we appoint Mr. Herman Nixon as constable for the Bullhead City Precinct effective April the 5, 2023. And I will second that.
All right, you've heard that motion, and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Thank you, everyone for attending. We're adjourned.